Good evening and welcome to the twice monthly meeting of Westminster's mayor and common council. During the public health emergency, we will be conducting our meetings virtually, and they will be available and streamed live on the city's Facebook page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. Even though tonight, we are for the first time in many months here in person, we're sorry that we still have to exclude the public from being able to join us in the room. We'll begin, as we do every meeting, with a pledge to the flag, followed by a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. First, we'll consider the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the meeting of the mayor and council on March 22, and special meetings on March 24 and March 30. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve, Mr. President.
There's been a motion by Mr. Cavaci. Is there a second?
A second, good.
There's a second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Thank you very much. We have several presentations tonight. We'll begin with a mayoral presentation on National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Little different reading proclamations in person, but not to anyone, so bear with me. So today, we have a proclamation for the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, which is April 11 through 17 of 2021. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police or emergency medical services, and when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers is critical to the protection of life, preservation of property, and the safety of our police officers is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Westminster Police Communication Center. And public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety. And public safety telecommunicators of the Westminster Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals and provision of police services. And each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Joe Dominic, mayor of the city of Westminster, on behalf of the common council, declare the week of April 11 through the 17th, 2021, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Westminster in honor of the men and women who use diligence and professionalism to keep our city and citizens safe. Did say be it resolved. I'm not sure. It should be proclaimed, but that's it, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to all those who keep us safe through their work as telecommunicators. Move on now to next item, which is the announcement of candidates for the offices of mayor and common council member, and for that, we'll turn to our city clerk, who is also our elections administrator, Ms. Fiskowski.
Yes, so for the election of 2021, the candidates are as follows. We have, for mayor, we have Mona Becker and Dennis Dillon. For council, we have Morgan Barclay Mathers. Then we have Tony Cavaci and Dan Huff. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Fiskowski. The next item is our quarterly progress report from the Mid-Atlantic Gigabit Innovative Innovation Collaboratory, better known in the community as MAGIC. And for that, we welcome Mr. Graham Dodge, the MAGIC executive director. Mr. Dodge, it's great to have you with us again.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to be here. I believe I need sharing permissions, screen share permissions from Ms. Fiskowski. It says disabled. Okay, thank you. Got it.
Sorry about that.
All right.
We're doing fine.
Yes, everybody, thank you very much for having me tonight, mayor and council. Thank you. This is our third quarter progress report for the months of January, February, and March 2021. For those of you who aren't familiar with MAGIC, I'd just like to briefly recap what we do and our position here in the community. We have a lot of programs that are sort of educational workforce programs, workforce development programs that attract students, attract industry volunteers and mentors. We offer a lot of great entrepreneurship programming as well, like our One Million Cups program, which attracts entrepreneurs and startups and investors and funding, and this allows us to sort of output economic development, workforce development, startup acceleration, and angel investing syndication. We have a technology-driven economic development vision and plan for the city of Westminster. We call it Silicon Main Street. And basically, you know, we want to see Main Street take advantage, full advantage of the gigabit fiber infrastructure, building on top of that with our autonomous corridor infrastructure that we're working on, and have that lead to a reversal of commuters who would otherwise be leaving Westminster Monday through Friday to go elsewhere. So we believe this will also retain Generation Z workforce and lead to economic prosperity for the community. We compare ourselves to Silicon Valley in many ways, because back in the 50s and 60s, you know, small train station towns like Mountain View and Palo Alto were very similar to Westminster's, you know, how it is today, with, you know, these larger cities like San Francisco and San Jose kind of looming, and, you know, we had this high quality of life, low cost of living opportunity that attracts defense contractors, brings a workforce here, and allows us to really build upon that engine of the workforce development that's already occurring here in the city of Westminster. We have touched upon the autonomous corridor project. We've made some great strides in this last quarter for announcing not only the May 20 event that we've got coming up to do the kickoff of Phase 1, and to be a showcase of autonomous vehicle technologies, but we've developed branding for the project. We have the vehicle wrapped for the scanning vehicle that will be driving through Westminster to scan the streets. So we're making significant progress there. We also want to still work on developing and executing this vision of Silicon Main Street with the city. We want to develop a Silicon Main Street logo. We want to crystallize this vision into an executable plan that really encompasses everything, holistically, from fiber all the way to the autonomous corridor. We also want to identify sources of data that we can use to track our key performance indicators as a city together, so we can monitor and communicate through these quarterly updates, those KPIs. All right, so speaking of KPIs, these are the quarterly KPIs that MAGIC reports to city council and mayor every quarter. For Q3, we had five sponsors participating in our special events. We received $8,000 in sponsor revenue from those events. We received only a little bit of $328.61 from stakeholder revenue generated, because most people would do their annual giving at the end of Q2. We've submitted four grant applications, have received awards so far for none of them from this past quarter, at least some of them are still pending and may come through to fruition in Q4. We didn't receive, therefore, any additional grant funding in Q3. We had eight volunteers from venture capitalists, startups, and tech companies engage with our programs. We had 10 meetings with Westminster-based CEOs, eight meetings with outside-of-Westminster CEOs and startups. We facilitated two jobs this last quarter. We had zero jobs placed outside of the city of Westminster this quarter. We hosted or attended 12 different conferences or events, obviously, online, and of those, we can attribute nine that where we were, you know, advertising and communicating the benefits of gigabit fiber here in Westminster. And then we were featured in four local and regional news publications. Here are some accomplishments from this past quarter to note. We completed the MAGIC Hackathon, our fifth annual Hackathon, and we had 17 startups that we brought into the One Million Cups community for our weekly Wednesday meetings. We launched a redesigned website, magicinc.org. We developed the branding for the autonomous corridor project, and we signed up 22 exhibitors and sponsors for the autonomous corridor event on May 20, and that revenue was not captured in this past quarter, so you'll see that post the next quarter. What's ahead for next quarter? We're going to have our 10th Capture the Flag event, which is a big anniversary for that. We're actually, Magic's also celebrating its fifth birthday as a 501(c)(3) organization in April. I forgot to put that on the list. We are launching our CyberJobs program, which we've just been sort of, we say that we've been going, we've been launching that, you know, each quarter, but with COVID, it's been hard to get businesses enrolled in that, so we're still waiting for the pandemic to kind of recede. We're launching our CTF for Teachers program, same thing with that. It was originally supposed to happen last year, but it looks like it's going to happen this June. Third semester of our game development classes will be underway starting in May. We're going to have three different classes, three different difficulty levels. We're going to, of course, have more of the One Million Cups meetings, including a great meeting this Wednesday with the author of a book, a bestselling book called Primitive, named Marco Greenberg, who's a special guest through through the efforts of Hey Westminster, collaborating with us on that event. And we have the autonomous corridor ribbon-cutting ceremony, again, that's May 20, 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. We're working with city staff and police to make sure that event goes off well without a hitch, and we'll be announcing our Spire Girls Female Leadership Program this summer. So really excited about that as well. And that is the end of my quarterly update.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Are there any questions for Mr. Dodge? All right. Well, thank you very much. Once again, I think, you know, I know I speak for most of us, if not all of us, when I say we're pretty excited about the autonomous vehicle project, looking forward to hearing more about that, and you look forward to, you keep us posted on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now it's time for the presentation on the 2022 budget proposal. And for that, we turn to our city administrator, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, President Peckraro. It's my pleasure this evening to present the proposed budget for FY 2022. The budget represents the mayor and common council's vision for service delivery in the next fiscal year, and in that regard, I consider it to be the most important action that the legislative body takes each year. Countless hours of work went into getting us to this point this evening, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the members of the city's management team, as well as the members of the finance committee for all their guidance and direction during this process. Before I kind of delve into the details, I just wanted to spend a few moments talking about some of the things that actually sort of drove the preparation of the budget. In our discussion with the finance committee, they directed that there be no change in the real property tax rates for FY 2022. We will see increased revenues due to higher property assessments in the next fiscal year, and that will impact both the general fund and the capital projects fund. As some of you may recall, who are more tenured, we undertook a rate study in FY 2018. A new rate structure was adopted for both water and sewer, and a five-year rate plan was adopted in conjunction with the fiscal 2019 budget. So the rates for FY 2022 were set as part of that multi-year rate structure adoption. For FY 2022, we'll see a 3.5% increase in water rates and a 5% increase in sewer rates. Another factor that influenced the development of the FY 2022 budget was that fiber fund revenues will be insufficient to cover debt service, and that will necessitate a transfer from the general fund of approximately $95,000. And lastly, as far as budget drivers, we are still obviously coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic. Certainly, I think the economy is stronger than what many of us feared it would be a year ago. Having said that, I think there will still be some impact on certain revenue sources in FY 2022, the most prominent of which is income tax receipts. A city staff has been advised by both state and county officials that they have, are noting payment anomalies in income tax receipts due to the pandemic's impact, and that we should be cautious about relying on FY 2021 data in terms of projecting for FY 2022. Staff has included in the budget proposal a slight budgetary increase in income tax receipts compared to FY 2021. We undertook a kind of a analysis, a look at our city's pay structure. We retained Evergreen Solutions, which was the firm that did the study a little over three years ago. Their recommendations were presented to the finance committee on March 26. Evergreen is recommending a 3% shift in the city's pay structure. What that means is that minimum midpoint and maximum of every pay range would be adjusted by 3%. Evergreen has also recommended the reclassification of certain positions in both the police department and in public works. This is basically due to the fact that they saw significant market shifts, in particular, in those positions. As part of their scope of work, Evergreen developed three alternative scenarios for employee wage adjustments for FY 2022. I know this is very familiar to the mayor and common council, but just for anyone in the community who may be watching who isn't familiar with the city's budget structure, our budget basically is encompassed by five separate funds. The general fund includes the operational activities of the city, such as planning, police protection, snow removal, and general administration, such as the activities of our finance department and my office. Also kind of rolled up into the general fund are the activities of the city's public housing authority. The Water Fund, the Sewer Fund, and Fiber Fund are known as enterprise funds. I think it's pretty obvious what those funds entail by their name. By policy, these funds are intended to be self-supporting. And lastly, the Capital Projects Fund is where we capture all financial activity related to our non-utility capital expenditures. Activities included in this fund include such traditional capital projects, such as our annual road paving project and city facility upgrades, including things such as roof replacements. Wanted to spend a few minutes sort of touching on how the FY 2022 budget proposal will advance the goals of your strategic plan. Our strategic plan was adopted in February 2018, and it was updated in both calendar year 2019 and 2020. There are five critical success factors which exemplify the elected body's long-term vision for the community. As I get ready to walk through specific aspects of the FY 22 budget that touch on the strategic plan, I would be remiss if I didn't note that not all of our strategic plan objectives are tied to a specific budgetary allocation. In some cases, it's really a matter of how staff allocates their time and resources on certain projects. That's particularly true in terms of our strategic plan initiative to build strong partnerships in the community. So with that said, under the umbrella of the water and sewer capacity for future generations, funding is included in the FY 2022 budget proposal for the inflow and infiltration mitigation project. As the mayor and common council are well aware, this has been one of your priorities to reduce inflow and infiltration into the city sewer system. When literally those holes are plugged, we basically add sewer capacity, which is very important for our continued growth and prosperity. Also, under this particular critical success factor is funding is included in the budget for continued work on the city's water reuse pilot project. Under the critical success factor of economic activity and growth, we have included funding in the Department of Community Planning and Development's operating budget to resume work, hopefully, in FY 2022, related to the redevelopment of the former Stockdale property. As you may recall, we hired a firm, Partners for Economic Solutions. They undertook their work. And then at their recommendation, we sort of hit the pause button, because with the pandemic, the economy was sort of thrown into a tailspin, and so we are hopeful that Partners for Economic Solutions can resume their work in FY 2022, and the city will be able to move forward with your vision for redeveloping that very critical corner in our downtown. Also, in Mr. Depot's budget is funding for consulting services to assist he and his staff with updating our zoning code and sign code during the next fiscal year. A number of items fall under the Responsible Stewardship of City Resources Critical Success Factor. This is a fairly broad critical success factor that touches on a number of things. Certainly, investment in our physical infrastructure, but also investment in our staff. The language surrounding this critical success factor also touches on your desire to be a more sustainable community and also to leverage technology related to our workforce, particularly the attraction and retention of a quality city staff. As I already mentioned, we did retain Evergreen Solutions at the end of 2020 to make sure that our salary structure and wage structure basically supports the quality and retention of city staff. As mayor and common council are aware, we will begin the process of implementing a police body worn camera program in FY 2022, and would like to take this opportunity to compliment the chief for his foresight. As everyone is probably aware, on Saturday, the legislature overrode the governor's veto, and basically, police body worn camera systems will be mandatory in Maryland in the coming years. Included in the budget is also funding for the purchase of an additional license plate reader to supplement that already in use in the police department. In the street department budget, we have funding to upgrade certain city facilities to LED lighting standards. This has a very quick payoff and should be a very good investment for the city. Also, throughout the CIP, you'll see a variety of projects that exemplify our appropriate investment in city infrastructure, whether that is roads, our fleet, or our parks, a variety of things. One of the projects included in the FY 2022 budget is beginning the process of implementing the master plan that is being developed for Wakefield Valley Park. I believe our consultant, Panonian Associates, will be making a presentation to the mayor and common council at your meeting in May. We also have funding for sealing of the Durbin House building envelope. As you all are aware, the Durbin House is one of the most important historic structures in the city. We are assuming in the budget that 50% of the cost of this project is funded by a grant that we have not yet received, but we are hopeful. Wanted to talk about property assessments. Real property is reassessed in Maryland on a triennial basis. For any residential property increases that result from reassessment, there is a three-year phase in. Any decreases phased in immediately. All Westminster property was reassessed in calendar year 2020, and FY 22 will mark the first year of that three-year assessment phase in. The city's net assessable base increase is approximately 50.66 million, or a 2.67% increase from that of a year ago. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the real property tax rate of 56 cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation will remain unchanged in FY 2022, but once again, we will see increased revenues due to higher assessments. Of that 56-cent property tax rate, 44 cents goes to the general fund, which should see an increase of about $333,000. The remaining 12 cents is earmarked by policy to go to the capital projects fund, and that fund will see an increase of roughly $91,000. The constant yield tax rate, which is a calculation performed by the state, is set at FY 2022 for .5454, so we will be exceeding the constant yield tax rate. Wanted to just go through very briefly staffing changes that occurred since you adopted the FY 2021 budget that will impact the FY 2022 budget. As you likely recall, mid-year in FY 2021, the mayor and common council approved the hiring of a second deputy chief in the police department. That position was not funded in FY 2021, but obviously will be funded for FY 2022. Our longtime police custodian retired at the end of calendar year 2020. The chief elected to move to the use of a contractual service, so that position was eliminated in the FY 2022 budget. We recently, I think it was April 1, was the cut-over date, transferred overnight dispatching services to the county, and that is allowing us to eliminate one communication specialist one position for the next fiscal year. And lastly, the FY 2022 budget reflects the elimination of the family fitness center manager position. You all had extensive discussion last year about putting in a plan to eliminate the longstanding fitness center operational deficit. The phase out of this position was part of the plan that Ms. Gruber presented to you all last year. Other personal cost information that may be of interest to the mayor and common council. We got a great renewal rate on our employee health insurance. Our costs will only go up by 1.5%. Our non-sworn police staff participate in the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System. We'll see a slight increase in our required employer contribution rate going from 10.24% to 10.57%. Our sworn police staff participates in the law enforcement officer's pension system, and we will actually see a slight decrease going from 34.93 to 34.21%. And lastly, we are seeing continued increases in the Maryland minimum wage. We are one of the states across the country that is geared up to eventually go to a $15 minimum wage in Maryland. Increases take effect on January 1. It is being phased in with each year. I believe it's leading to 2025. The minimum wage is going up by 75 cents as of January 1 each year until we hit that $15 rate. A pending decision that will affect personnel cost, as I mentioned earlier, Evergreen has recommended a 3% pay structure shift. They have also recommended position reclassifications. Decisions on those matters is still pending. Also pending are decisions on employee wage adjustments, what exactly that will look like for next year. And we did receive new position requests for staffing from both Mr. Davidson for the Technology Department and Mr. Strasburg, our street superintendent. So those issues will need to be worked out during the course of your budget process. Just a few other things about the general fund that may be of interest in the legislative and administrative services department's operating budget. There is funding for a team-building strategic planning retreat. You will have some new faces on the mayor and common council after the election in May. Also, you will have a new city administrator within the next couple months. And additionally, your strategic plan timeframe basically expires at the end of 2021. So it's a good time for you all to regroup in the fall, spend some time together, and also kind of refresh your strategic plan and develop a new vision for the next couple years. We have also included funding in the draft budget for a repeat of the 2019 resident survey. When those results were presented to you about two and a half years ago, you instructed that you wanted to do a survey every two to three years, so this would accomplish that direction. Thought it might be helpful for you all to know that the fitness center is budgeted in FY 2022 to be operationally positive, roughly 44,000. I would note that this figure only deals with operational cost. It does exclude all capital cost associated with the operation of the fitness center. Our pool is budgeted at a deficit for FY 2022 at $16,500, and our summer camp is also budgeted at a deficit of roughly $16,000. We have put in new pricing structures. We're not sure how the community is going to respond to that. And we are also obviously still dealing with either mandated state restrictions in terms of summer camp or just potentially folks' concerns about being in a pool. Included in the budget is the customary outside agency funding that we have provided to the Westminster Volunteer Fire Department and the Westminster Municipal Band for many, many years. No change in those funding levels is proposed. A new to our kind of outside agency funding, we did receive a request from the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area. They have been involved in the grant that we received for the Durbin House. They reached out to the city to request a contribution for FY 2022, and after discussion, the finance committee did recommend that we honor that request for FY 2022 at their direction as well. I have emphasized to the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area that there should not necessarily be an expectation that this funding would continue in future years. We have for many, for the last four years, given funding to MAGIC, as you know. At the end of this fiscal year, we would have given grant funding totaling $320,000. Prior to that, the grant Prior to that, the grant process beginning in FY 2020, we provided some direct support by paying for the cost of their executive director. There is a placeholder amount included in the general fund of $80,000 at the direction of the finance committee. This would be a new cost to the general fund. As I mentioned, the fiber fund is in a deficit position. It will require a transfer from the general fund to be brought into balance. Given that it didn't make any sense to basically just up the transfer. It made more sense just to include any grant funding that you elect to include in the budget in the general fund because that's practically speaking where the funding is coming from anyway. Switching to the water fund, as I mentioned earlier, we'll have a 3.5% rate increase in FY 2022. I did want to call out that when you look at the budget and you look at total revenues, those revenues include benefit assessment fees of approximately $541,000. The use of those benefit assessment fees is restricted by law. And we only have one project in FY 2022 that qualifies for the use of benefit assessment fees, and that is the water reuse pilot. So when you look at kind of a comparison of revenues to expenditures, please keep in mind that those benefit assessment fees are restricted. So not all of the funding that will be coming in in FY 2022 is actually available for use. The budget does contemplate a reserve allocation of approximately $294,000. And this is a reappropriation of FY 2021 capital funding for projects that were not completed during, will not be complete during this fiscal year. Some projects, just to highlight for you, and there's certainly more than this in the capital improvement program, but as I mentioned, we'll continue work on our water reuse initiative next year. We have roughly $460,000 in continued funding for the pilot project. A portion of this cost, a significant portion of this cost, about $347,000 will actually be available from a federal grant through the United States Bureau of Reclamation. The balance of the cost for this project will be paid for out of benefit assessment monies. We have a placeholder amount of $250,000 for elimination of what are known as PFAS chemicals at Well Aid, as the mayor and common council are aware. I'm sampling by the Maryland Department of the Environment Detective, the presence of certain PFAS chemicals at Well Aid. At their direction, we have taken Well Aid out of service until such time as we develop a mitigation strategy. The mitigation strategy is still in the engineering phase, so we don't know exactly what that will cost. So at Mr. Glass's recommendation, Ms. Colston and I included a placeholder number of $250,000. So it could be more, it could be less than that. We also have continued work on the Route 27 water main replacement of 275,000. That project is anticipated to be in design this fiscal year and actual construction starting next year. And debt service next year should total about $962,000 in the water fund. Switching to the sewer fund, once again, there'll be a 5% rate increase. Other revenue sources include a state bay restoration grant for Ian, the E and R Bio Solids project. There is also loan funding for that project, and we will be receiving reimbursement from the county for their portion of the project, which is the septic facility upgrade, which they own. Similar to the discussion we just had about the water fund, we will be bringing in roughly $444,000 in benefit assessment fees coming for the sewer fund. Its use is also restricted, and there are no qualifying projects that those funds can be applied to in FY 2022. As I mentioned, continue, work will continue on the E and R Bio Solids Upgrade Project. That is by far the largest sewer fund expenditure of just under 24 million. The county septic facility is about 1.7 million of that amount. We'll be spending $1 million on inflow and infiltration work in FY 2022. That'll be a series of small lining projects throughout the city. We are still only paying interest on the state loan for the E and R Bio Solids Upgrade Project. So debt service will be interest only at $400,000. And our wastewater superintendent, Mr. Rawlings, would like to buy a new influence screen. I think he's gotten as much life out of the existing one as he can. Switching to the fiber fund, we are estimating some continued growth in our, in the Ting subscribers. Specifically, we are assuming an increase of 28 subscribers per month. That would generate payments from Ting to the city of approximately $825,000. The fiber fund budget contemplates a drawdown from the state loan that we got. This is a 0% 30 year balloon payment at the end of 30 year loan. We will be drawing down about $517,000 from that loan. And if that number holds, basically, all $1.3 million from the state loan will be fully utilized by June 30th, 2022. Debt service in the fiber fund is going to be about $925,000. And I do just want to kind of draw up kind of the juxtaposition of the payments that we are getting from Ting of about 825,000 just relative to debt service alone. It's not covering that, as you all were, there are other costs associated in the fiber fund. But specifically, the Ting revenue will be insufficient to cover debt service, and a general fund transfer will be needed to balance the fund. As I mentioned, that general fund transfer currently stands at about 95,000. Any shift in the pay structure, any wage adjustments that we grant in FY 2022 will increase the amount of that transfer that is needed to bring the fund into balance. One of the items that staff discussed with members of the finance committee was the current staffing allocation is not representative of the true cost of the fiber fund. For example, no portion of Mr. Glass's salary and benefit cost is charged to the fiber fund. The same holds true for Ms. Colston, as well as the utility maintenance superintendent. The finance committee has recommended that the mayor and common council review the current staffing allocation for the fiber fund in FY 2022. And prior to your FY 2023 budget, make a determination as to whether any change in that allocation is warranted. Kind of looking ahead to FY 2023 and beyond in the fiber fund, as I mentioned, we anticipate that we will exhaust the $1.3 million in state loan proceeds by the end of fiscal year 2022. If we already have an operating transfer of roughly 100,000 and we're using $500,000 of state loan proceeds, what that means is beginning in FY 2023, in the absence of any type of new funding source, the city will be looking at a funding gap in excess of $600,000. Once again, in the absence of any new source of revenue, that will be the operating transfer amount that you are looking at from the general fund. And in the longer term, that will be financially unsustainable. So there has been some discussion of implementing a community broadband fee, and that would certainly be something I would recommend you charge my successor with addressing with staff as a high priority when he or she comes on board. Switching to the capital projects fund, this fund has a number of funding sources. Certainly, the dedicated property tax revenues that I mentioned earlier, we get funding from highway user revenues, which can be specifically used for road improvements. We will see special benefit assessment fees in this fund as well. We will be undertaking the renovation of our pool, so we will be drawing down the bond proceeds to make those pool improvements. We have a awarded but unused program open space grant, and I know, I believe it's our turn in the cycle in FY 2022. So hopefully, Ms. Gruber will be successful in getting some additional program open space funds in FY 2022. One of the discussions we had with the finance committee because the departmental request, as usual, exceeded our available funding. As you recall, we sold the former West End School property during this fiscal year. And basically, we yielded $430,000. The finance committee has endorsed transferring that $430,000 from the general fund into the capital projects fund for use for those very needed capital projects. So that meant that we did not have to basically really dig into and cut the request from the department. There will also be an allocation from the fund reserve. This also is representative, similar to the water fund of FY 2021 capital projects that were not complete by the end of this year. Similar to what I've already said, benefit assessment fee use is highly restricted. There is one qualifying project in the capital projects fund for FY 2022, and that is the purchase of a new leaf vacuum. We are seeing continued residential growth, and Mr. Strasberg could benefit from having an additional leaf vacuum to basically service those growing areas in the city. I mentioned we'll be doing some community pool improvements. I believe Ms. Gruber's intention is to get the request for bids out on the streets so that construction can almost start immediately after the pool is closed. After Labor Day weekend, we'll be undertaking our annual road paving project, purchasing vehicles for both the police department and the street department. There is funding included in the capital projects fund budget to begin the process of implementing the Wakefield Master Plan that is being developed. And there is also debt service included in the capital projects fund. So to kind of wrap up, wanted to just kind of walk through the schedule with you all. Later in your meeting agenda, you will be considering introduction of the ordinance adopting the FY 2022 budget. This is not the adoption, simply the introduction of that budget ordinance to get it into play. On April 19th, you will be holding a special meeting. That meeting will include a public hearing so that the community can offer input on the proposed budget. It is also the first of two budget work sessions that the mayor and common council will be holding. On April 26th, you'll have the second public hearing. You will also be holding a public hearing that is required by state law, referred to as the Constant Yield Tax Rate Hearing. As I mentioned, we are planning to hold our tax rate at 56 cents. The constant yield tax rate is .5454. Anytime in Maryland that a tax rate will exceed the constant yield tax rate, you are required to hold a hearing. And that will also, April 26th will also mark the last of your scheduled budget work sessions. I did want to note that these are your budget work sessions, and the topics that are discussed will be determined by the mayor and common council. Unless staff receives direction as to specific topics that you would like us to present on, the work sessions will basically be structured as an opportunity for the mayor and common council to discuss whatever aspects of the budget you'd like to discuss amongst yourselves. And obviously, all the department directors will be participating in the budget work sessions, and they will be available to answer any questions that you might have. So we await your direction as to whether or not there are any specific topics that you want to cover specifically at the April 19th work session so that we have an adequate opportunity to prepare materials for any presentation you would like. And lastly, the current schedule calls for the budget to be adopted on May 10th. And with that, that concludes my presentation. And I want to thank you for your time and look forward, staff and I look forward to working with all of you to finalize a budget for FY 2022 that advances the goals of your strategic plan and also serves the Westminster community.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews, and for that presentation, and thanks to you and Ms. Colston and the rest of the staff, including the department heads who did so much good work to help put together this budget. We appreciate everyone's hard work on this and especially the thoughtful approach to budgeting that we've traditionally taken here in the last few years. I'd like to suggest two things. First of all, I think the depth presentation was very helpful. And if you could distribute that to the mayor and council by email, I think it'd be a useful, you know, tool for people to try and help you think about the topics we want to discuss at the work sessions. Secondly, I'd like to ask my colleagues on the next day or so, if you could identify those issues and get back to me with your suggestions, then we could put together a list and be able to share that with the staff so that you know, Ms. Matthews and the staff will be prepared to provide any information we may need and to be able to help us as we walk through those issues. So with that, you know, if you all could help us with that, we'll be prepared to move forward for the meeting on the 19th. Mr. President, do you have anything to add to this?
No, not to that. That's exactly what I would have said. Your comments.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. That ends our presentations for this evening, and we will now move on to our report from the mayor. Oh, yes, Mr. Kavachi.
The work session on the 26th.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a schedule for that yet? Is that real time set? And then the 19th is our normal meeting.
Right, right.
26th, we have a council meeting, correct?
Yes.
So I'm assuming we're going to schedule.
Part of that council meeting.
We're going to make it part of the meeting, not a separate meeting.
No, that's right.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So now, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I'll keep it short. I think, you know, it's clear to see what we've been working on lately. And Mr. Davidson, I have my laptop muted. That's the way it's supposed to be, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just double checking before I said everything. The only thing I would say is that we have an election coming up here at the beginning of May, and you know, I'd like to see a big turnout. I think, I think it would be nice for us to have a big turnout. And, and you know, sometimes there are big turnouts because they're, they're big issues that people are happy to support or upset about. But I think there should just be a big turnout anyway. And I don't think there are a lot of those issues right now, but I think, you know, I'd like to see, you know, I'd like to see a lot of people come out and, and support their you know, their favorite elected officials or I guess possible elected officials. And that's really all I have to say, Mr. President. Just, I'd like to see a big turnout for the election.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We always want to encourage everybody to vote. We'll now move on to reports from standing committees. From the Arts Council Liaison, Mr. Dehoff.
I'll report this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank you, Mr. Dehoff, for the Economic Development, Economic and Community Development Committee, Mr. Yingling.
Yeah, one thing. We have scheduled, and I'm looking at the calendar right now. We are having an economic community development meeting at 9:00 AM on April 23rd. I believe the agenda will, well, I don't have the agenda yet, but I know two topics that will be discussed is the the, excuse me, Partners for Economic Solutions, who are consultants on the Stockdale redevelopment will be presenting some of their research and some feasibility, you know, of the idea of developing that property into some sort of boutique hotel. I know they were looking into that per the committee's direction. So very excited to discuss that. And the Be Kind Initiative is on, I believe, on the agenda. We had some discussion about that a few months ago. So that, that's for now what is going to be discussed. I would encourage everybody watching who's interested to tune in at 9:00 AM, April 23rd, will be streaming on Facebook Live. And that's my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Yingling. For the finance committee, you've, you just heard the budget presentation, and I don't have anything to add to that. On behalf of the personnel committee, Ms. Gilbert, do you have anything to share?
Just that Ms. McCullough and I will be working very shortly on the telework policy and information regarding that will be forthcoming at a future council meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Public safety, Mr. Kavachi.
The only thing I have, Mr. President, is again, I know it sounds like a broken record, but it's a good broken record. The crime statistics still are consistently staying low. They've been low for years. Actually, we've seen crime consistently drop for probably 15 to 20 years now in the city, and that trend is continuing. It's on a, you know, steady, either even keel or decline. And recently, it has been going down, and I'm going to keep it that way. And I, you know, I'm proud of the job that, you know, the Westminster Police Department does to help facilitate that. But I'm also proud to live in a community that isn't riddled with it as well, because that's, that's in big part due to the citizens that live here, and they're paying attention to what's going on around them. If we see something, they report it, and that's positive. And that's what we need to do to to keep going in the direction that we are. And I'm glad to see it and glad to report it, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kavachi, for the public works committee, Mr. Yingling.
No report this evening.
Thank you very much. Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dehoff.
We have an advisory board meeting coming up, and we're looking forward to continuing. That committee has worked out, the advisory board has worked out extremely well. And we're looking forward to that meeting and continuing our work on things such as the pickleball. We relined the courts. We're going to be looking at Wakefield Valley Park and the recreation initiatives. And we're really happy with the the good work that's being accomplished over at the family center and applaud Ms. Gruber and, and the folks over there who are doing a great job for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dehoff. No report for the technology committee, except to say that we'll be talking with Mr. Dodge some more about the autonomous vehicle program and the city's role that is anticipated being played in that to make sure that we are in a position to do all the things that we need to do for that, to make it work. That is, those That ends those reports, committee reports, council comments and discussion. This is the time during the meeting when council members are able to comment on anything else that is of interest to them, that does not. You come under one of their committee reports. And so we'll begin with the side of the table with Mr. Kavachi.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and I won't steal it, I promise. But I do have one thing. I had an opportunity today to have a brief meeting with one of the two founders of the Infinite Love Project, which Mr. Yingling had mentioned earlier is going to be. On the agenda for your Economic Development Committee meeting. And I just was so impressed. My wife. A long, long time ago, found out about it when it was kind of in its infancy and sort of got us a little involved in terms of buying some of the signs and putting them up. I have one on my building, one at my home, and we bought some others for some folks. But spending a little time with him today, I was just very impressed with what they're doing and how that's moving along. They've got an incredible number of signs out. They've got some big plans that I think we can continue to be part of. And I just, I'm so thrilled that as a as a city, we've kind of jumped on board with them. And that was not my doing. I think it was, I don't, I don't know which one of you actually kind of brought that in, if you, Mr. Mayor. But somehow that that has become, you know, integral to the city of Westminster. I couldn't be more proud after spending time with with that gentleman today and getting to learn more about the project and what they're doing and the enthusiasm. He walked out of my office and I, it just, it just felt good. And it's a really cool thing and I hope we will continue to support them and and grow with them over the years to come. So I was glad to see that they're on that agenda for your committee, Mr. Yingling. So that's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. And with that, we'll go to Mr. Yingling.
No comment tonight, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Gilbert.
Yes, I have a few things. First, I wanted to thank Ms. Gruber. I met with her and her team in April. With one of the planning meetings for the master plan regarding the Dobbin House. So that was exciting and I was quite thankful I was part of a little piece of that day. Also wanted to draw attention to the opening of Mission Barbecue. They are finally open the last weekend, the last week in April. Or no, last weekend in March, sorry. Time just flies around here. Last week in March, they did their their grand opening. So they, I welcomed them to Westminster and I'm glad to be a part of that. I believe, Mr. President, you or no, Mr. Mayor, you spoke about the election. So I wanted to at least say a little bit about encouraging the city residents to meet with all the candidates and. And trying to make an informed decision about who you're going to vote for and come out to vote. We always love to see large amounts of people hitting the polling, polling places. And I also wanted to highlight today's nonprofit view in Carroll County Times. There's an article written by Mr. Dodge. Take a moment to please read it. I'm looking forward to the development of our Silicon Main Street as well and the autonomous corridor. So that's all I have for today.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. And finally, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm also impressed with the Be Kind Initiative, the Infinite Love Initiative. And I think that's, that's a lot of what Westminster is all about. I also want to also give a shout out to Mission Barbecue. They opened on Vietnam Veterans Day. We are often a bit of a forgotten veteran at this point in time, and I really appreciated that they recognized us. And I think they're really going to be a great community player. I want to mention that Chief Ledwell and the Deputy Chief, Deputy Chief Gibson. Myself and Dr. Mona Becker got together with the Poor People's Campaign. They had an excellent presentation at the playground last Saturday. And we met a lot of folks and we enjoyed talking to folks about the resources that we have in our community. And it was a, it was a good thing. I also really appreciate the fact that crime is continuing to drop in the city of Westminster. The Westminster Police Department, I believe, as an agency, is on the cutting edge of of everything that's good about police reform. And we really appreciate all of the hard work that they've done. To every man and woman over at the department is just a joy to work with them. And I'm really proud of what it is that the police department's done. And I guess I have to give a shout out to the Public Safety Chair, Councilman Kavachi. I really appreciate his work and encouraging and. And being a good support structure for the police department. Thank you.
I thank you, Mr. Dayhoff.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to say one thing quickly here because Mr. Kavachi, when he was talking about the Infinite Love Project and the Be Kind Signs. I did not bring that here. That was actually Graham with Magic. He brought it in. I want to say, and I know I'm, and I'm the one that wanted to discuss, to discuss it with caution moving forward. Because we're, we're, we're discussing kind of branding the city. Using something that, you know, in the private sector and we don't have control of, and I think that we need to proceed with caution. But I did want to say that I, you know, I really do support it and I'm proceeding optimistically with caution. So I will be discussing that in the Economic Development, you know, committee meeting, but I just wanted to make sure credit where it was due.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's now time for unfinished business. There is no unfinished business of which I'm aware unless anybody else has any to to bring up. Moving on, we'll turn to new business. We have one item of, I'm sorry, I skipped over ordinances, resolutions. I apologize. We have three ordinances of resolution tonight, three items there. The first is introduction of ordinance number nine thirty three. An ordinance amending the code of the city of Westminster, Chapter thirty six procurement and contracts. To add section thirty six dash seven sustainable procurement practices. And for that, we will call on our city administrator, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, President Pet Guerrero. As you all undoubtedly recall, back in March, the Common Council adopted Resolution Number one dash zero one. Supporting the city of Westminster's participation in the Sustainable Maryland Certification Program. This is a free and voluntary certification program for municipalities in Maryland that want to go green, save money and take steps to sustain their quality of life over the long term. Sustainable Maryland is a collaborative effort between the Environmental Finance Center at the University of Maryland and the Maryland Municipal League. To become Sustainable Maryland certified, a municipality must complete and document actions worth a total of a hundred and fifty points. And those points must include two mandatory actions and two of six priority actions. The municipality must then submit the appropriate documents as evidence that the program requirements have been satisfied. Included in your agenda packet is information on the various actions that Westminster will be able to take to earn points. The adoption of a green purchasing policy would fulfill one of the required two priority actions. Ordinance number nine three three, which is before you tonight for introduction. Would add a new section, sustainable procurement practices to Chapter thirty six of the city code. This new section, if adopted, would provide for adoption of a resolution that would set forth the goals and objectives of the city's sustainable contracting practices. And direct staff to follow the same in the acquisition of goods and services to the maximum extent practical. The companion resolution will be brought forward for consideration in conjunction with the Common Council's adoption of ordinance number nine three three. Which right now is slated for April twenty six, assuming you do introduce ordinance number nine three three this evening. So with that, I will open it up for any questions that you all have.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Let's get this forth properly. May I have a motion introduced to introduce ordinance number nine thirty three?
I'd like to make the motion to introduce the ordinance number nine three three.
There's a motion by Ms. Gilbert to introduce. Is there a second?
I'd like to second it.
The second by Mr. Dayhoff. All right. Thank you very much. Any questions from Ms. Matthews or any discussion? All right. Hearing none. Then, you know, we'll move on to all those in favor of the introduction of ordinance number nine thirty three. Please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The aye seem to have it and the ayes have it. The ordinance is introduced and will be placed, deplaced on the agenda in a future meeting for discussion and possible adoption. The next item is introduction of ordinance number nine thirty four. An ordinance amending Chapter one sixty four zoning and subdivision of land of the Westminster City Code, Article one, General Provisions. Article eight B Business Zone, Article ten IR Restricted Industrial Zone. Article eleven IG General Industrial Zone, Article twelve PI Plant Industrial Zone. And Article twenty Special Provisions to allow a new solar energy facility use as a permitted use or special exception use. And for that, we will call on our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Depot.
Thank you and good evening. The Department of Community Plan and Development was approached by Alder Energy Systems requesting to place solar panels on the rooftop of the existing Westminster self stored structures. The proposed solar panel project is intended to be part of the Maryland's Community Solar Pilot Program. Currently, solar fields or solar panels are not a defined use and are not listed as an allowed use in the zoning ordinance. Westminster does allow solar panels as an accessory use if the power generated is provided only to the property on which the solar panels are located. Typically, these accessory solar panels you can find are installed on residential rooftops producing energy for the home. If the solar panels are producing energy that exceeds the on-site need, as is the case with the Westminster self-storage site. These solar panels would be considered a principal use and therefore not allowed pursuant to the zoning ordinance. On March tenth, twenty twenty one, the Economic and Community Development Committee directed staff to bring forward a draft text amendment. Using the provided information in attachment one of the staff report as a general guide. To the mayor and common council to allow rooftop solar panels as a permitted use or special exception use in the IR zoning district or other applicable zoning districts. The draft text amendment before you tonight that's being introduced is recommending to add a new definition of solar collector roof mounted. Add a new definition of solar facility roof mounted. Add a new solar facility roof mounted use as a special exception use in B Business Zone, IR Restricted Industrial Zone. IG General Industrial Zone and PI Plant Industrial Zone, subject to special provisions. And finally, adding new solar facilities, special provisions. Staff recommends that the common and council introduce proposed ordinance number nine thirty four. And refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its review and recommendation to the mayor and common council. That completes my report. I'm available for any questions.
I thank you, Mr. Depot.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to introduce ordinance number nine thirty four?
Motion to introduce.
I'll second. That is a motion by Mr. Yingling and a second by Mr. Kavachi to introduce ordinance number nine thirty four. Are there any questions for Mr. Depot or any discussion on the introduction?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavachi.
I know this is only introduction, so we don't have to get into too much of a lengthy discussion, but I just want to get clarity on one thing. I wasn't sure reading it. Mr. Depot does this, are there any zones where it will be just an openly allowed use? Or is it going to be a special exception in all the zones that it's going to be permitted by special exceptions? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
You are correct. The four zoning districts, we listed them as special exceptions as the, to introduce the ordinance, however. By the title of what we're presenting before the mayor and common council tonight. And before the planning commission gives the planning commission to provide any recommendation, they may see fit where a use could be a permitted use. And that would be brought back amended to the mayor and common council. So it is open. It opens the door for that ability and discussion when we get to the planning and zoning commission.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Depot.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Are there any other questions for Mr. Depot or any discussion? So I just one question on Mr. Depot. So so while the request came from one specific property owner. Which is located obviously in one particular spot with a particular zoning. This would make this possible throughout a number of different zones within the city.
Yes, it would. Primarily the industrial based zoning districts.
Right, which is, which is, it would seem to me appropriate. Thank you. All right. Without any further discussion, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of introduction of ordinance number nine thirty four, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The aye seem to have it and the ayes have it. And the ordinance is introduced and will be referred to the planning commission.
Thank you.
The final item is introduction of ordinance number nine thirty five. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of Westminster, Maryland approving and adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty one. And ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. And I'll call on our finance director, Ms. Colston.
Good evening. As you know, we are thick into the process of the budget and we have this ordinance that we're recommending council approve. For the introduction of the budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty one and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. We just sat through a wonderful presentation by the city administrator, Barb Matthews. So I'm not going to go into too much detail about it, but I am available for any questions should you have them.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Colston. All right. We've, we've heard the city administrator's presentation. Ms. Colston's ready to answer any questions, as I'm sure is Ms. Matthews. Let's start with a motion. May I have a motion to introduce ordinance number nine thirty five?
I'll make the motion to introduce ordinance number nine thirty five.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Ms. Gilbert. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And there's a second by Mr. Dayhoff. Is there any discussion or are there any questions? Right. Hearing none, we will move on to a vote on introduction of ordinance number nine thirty five. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The opinion, the chair, the ayes have it and the ayes have it. And we will move this forward to our work session and continuing discussions beginning on April nineteenth.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
Want to be sure that we get the slide presentation.
Right. And I did ask Ms. Matthews.
So you did. I just wanted to emphasize, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly. All right. Our next item is unfinished business. As I stated earlier, I'm aware of no unfinished business. Moving on from there to new business, we have one item. Vote to go into a closed session. Mr. Kavachi, do you have a motion for us?
I do, Mr. President. Under statutory authority to close sessions under the Maryland Annotative Code, General Provisions, Article three dash three oh five B. We would like to close the session, go into a closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation. Or performance evaluation of appointees, employees or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction. Or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. To also consult council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter and to consult with staff, consultants. Or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. To also under three oh five B, under category one, personnel proposal. Nope, I'm good. That's it.
All right.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Mr. Kavachi and a second by Mr. Dayhoff. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it. And the council will go into a closed session at the conclusion of the regular meeting. It's time now for departmental reports. And for that, we will turn to Ms. Matthews and city administrator to lead us through that. Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, President Pet Guerrero. Just wanted to mention that our new housing services director, Eric Brown, will be joining the city staff tomorrow. And I'm sure you joined me in being excited about his coming on board. I also wanted to mention fairly recently, you all approved an ordinance authorizing execution of a purchase contract. For the sale of the Winters lot. This is the parking lot that is in front of our former lease space at fifty six West. I got an email late Friday evening from one of the owner representatives indicating that. Something came up during the title search and they would like an extension of the forty five day due diligence period, which certainly. I don't see any reason why the city wouldn't be supportive of that. Ms. Levann has outlined that all that is necessary is the execution of a letter agreement by the parties extending that due diligence period. But I did feel it would be appropriate to share that with the mayor and common council this evening, that that action will likely take place. And with that, I would like to turn to Councilmember Dayhoff to see if he has a report he would like to share on behalf of the Westminster Volunteer Fire Department.
No report this evening. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson, our Director of Technology.
Nothing new to report tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Colston.
I have nothing further to report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Depot.
Good evening again. On April sixth, the Board of Zoning Appeals approved a special exception for one fifty gravel lane. This is a private indoor recreation use at Seven Tuck Road. The BZA also heard of administrative appeal case appealing a zoning determination regarding the use of an existing freestanding sign located off the property of the business wanting to use the sign. Just briefly, in the B Business Zone, on premise signs are permitted as an accessory use. Standard practice has been that when the zoning ordinance references on premise, it would mean when the property off premise would mean off the property. However, the ordinance, as seems to be the case. However, the ordinance, as seems to be the case, does that. Another circumstance is not define the term premise. Therefore, the zoning administrator, through a determination, defined on-premises meaning the, on the property and subsequently denied the request for the use of the off-property freestanding sign by the business. This determination was appealed and the BZI ruled in favor of the appellate and found that the zoning administrator was incorrect in the definition of on-premise, thereby allowing the use of the existing freestanding sign. I only bring this up because ultimately it may change how signage, including billboards, is allowed within the city of Westminster, as well as affect other circumstances on and off the premise, when on and off premise is used in the zoning ordinance. On April eighth, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved an amended plat for Meadow Branch Industrial Park located off of Buckshot Road. They approved Clark Farm Site Development Plan for the thirty-five multi-family dwelling units off of Mulligan Lane and also approved Landstaller Site Development Plan for an automobile sales and services along Maryland one forty. There was no Historic District Commission meeting this month, and that completes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
Mr. Depot, you and I have discussed in the past, and I believe that other council members have discussed with you, we need to take a good look at some of our zoning. We, we need to, we need, we need, we really need to clean up some of our zoning statutes. And I believe that we have taken a good look at doing that in, in the, in the coming year.
And, you know, we've got a consultant that we're bringing on board. That's, I think, Mr. Depot can speak to it, but I think that's the intention.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I just, I really wanted to emphasize that. It, it's time for, it's, it's time for us to take a good look at it and clean it up a little bit. But thank you for all your work, Mr. Depot. I understand that it's, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of tough work at times and we really appreciate your work.
Thank you. In this case, I bring it up again, maybe this is a time that we do look at this term on-premises now and maybe through a text amendment. It is, it's, it's used in multiple ways on the on-premise. It, it can be very confusing, the ordinance, and this is something that couldn't be a minor text amendment type to clean up the ordinance. And, and, you know, prior to moving into the larger sections, we want to look at changing.
A text, a text amendment is something that I had in mind also. So it's good that we're maybe thinking along the same lines with that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I don't think we need to revisit the definition of premise. I think the situation that was, that came up was in front of the BZI because it's a situation where it needed an exception, not necessarily something that we need to change the, the code over this particular situation. Just so everyone's familiar, the property we're talking about is where the new Mission Barbecue went in. And they had a sign that was just over a shared property line for, you know, that whole property is actually split up. It's not just one property when you look at it legally. It was just over the line. And for decades, that sign was used by whoever was in that building. So for decades, basically, we had Friendly's and you had Hardee's, which I believe went in the seventies. And while the city didn't have any record of us approving a sign or, or having anything to do with the sign there, there was record of the county approving a permit for electrical back in the seventies for, for Hardee's. So we knew the, the sign was back, I mean, we're talking fifty years now. So for a, a business to move into town and have every expectation to use the sign that that, whatever businesses were there have been using for, you know, fifty years and then be told they can't. I understand the, you know, the position of our planning department, and that's exactly why I think the BZI exists. I think it was really, you know, I, I think, you know, it went exactly how it should have gone. I, I think it, you know, again, the expectation was set for over five decades. And, and, you know, I think that sign should be used. And the alternatives to, to that were to, you know, tear down two signs and switch them. Or they're just, none of them were practical. So, but I, I guess my main, my main point is I don't think the, the, the issue itself was we were, you know, misusing the word premise. And I don't think that needs to be part of any major movement moving forward, but that's just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. I guess Ms. Matthews will move, go back to you. Move on.
You. Our Deputy Public Works Director, Mr. Dick, is sitting in for Mr. Glass this evening.
Thank you. Real quickly, our annual paving project, which is on Whispering Meadows right now, will be finished up in the next week or two. By the middle of next week is what I'm predicting since it wants to rain every day now. As well as our annual ADA ramp and curb for this year is finishing up probably by the end of this week. Phase three I and I is going to be starting up on Wednesday. They're going to be moving and mobilizing. And I think they're looking to start actually doing the work next Monday after they get set up. Pre-cast wall is out at the wastewater treatment plant for the sludge drying building. We're starting to go up. So anybody going down thirty-one should start to notice a building there instead of framework. So that's a good thing. Rather than that, that's probably on my list right now.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. Ms. Grover?
Good evening. Just a few updates since your last meeting. On March twenty-fifth, the team from Grove and Del Olio Architects sent six members out to spend about eight hours on site, finishing their final evaluation of the Durbin House. And we anticipate seeing a draft report from that firm sometime in May. So I certainly will bring additional details back to you once we see some concrete information coming back from Grove and Del Olio. On March twenty-seventh, the city's recreation department hosted a bunny trail in lieu of our traditional egg hunt. And we had a tremendous spread of photographs online through Carroll County Times. And we made over two hundred families very happy on that particular day. Lots of smiling children. And of course, the weather cooperated. So that's always a good thing. On March thirtieth, ruling associates finally finished their geotechnical borings at the pool. This is the final piece of the bid documents that we're waiting on. We still haven't received their report, but we do anticipate receiving that shortly, at which time then we will be able to pull together the bid package and submit it for review and hopefully posting to email and marketplace. And also after the Recreation and Park Advisory Board's favorable recommendation to have additional tennis courts lined as pickleball courts and your assessment of that, the work was completed expediently by our streets department. And we now have active pickleball play occurring on city park courts, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from ten to twelve, Tuesdays and Thursdays from ten to twelve, Sundays from five thirty to eight thirty, and Thursdays from six to nine, with a recent request to add another group on Tuesdays from six to nine. So certainly those efforts are being utilized. And I would like to extend thanks from the pickleball players to you for your endorsement of that recommendation as they are enjoying the outdoor space. This concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I would just like to say I like the pickleball initiative. I never even heard of pickleball until probably a year and a half ago when Councilman Yingling started talking about it. And I just thought it was some silly thing you saw on the internet. But more and more over the last like year, year and a half, I've heard more people talk about it and get excited about it. And I've gotten some feedback from the community and they like that we're doing more with it. And it's vastly coming the unofficial official sport of Westminster. And I'm looking forward to hear from Councilman Cavaci's patrol of the courts. Thank you, Mr. President.
Trying to insinuate that I'm of a certain age?
No, I, I just know that you, you live right there and we discussed in previous meetings that you would patrol the courts and keep an eye on sound levels and whatnot. Yep.
With that, Chief Ledwell?
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank you for your proclamation. Our dispatchers, as well as all the communication specialists, do play a crucial part in the safety of our community as well as the operation of our police department. So thank you for that. We recently sent out invitation on the city newsletter and through our social media outlets to recruit community residents to help us with our formal community engagement, police community engagement strategies. We did have a pretty good response and we've started to schedule our first meeting in that regard. We are currently working with staff here to look at all the legislation that was passed very recently regarding police operations and how that'll affect our policies, our training, our reporting. We think we're in pretty good shape moving forward, but we'll be looking at that and the mandated deadlines to complete those things. We're in the process along that line of collaborating with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office to combine our in-service trainings programs to ensure that we have standardization and to use synergy in that regard. We have one police recruit who is doing very well in the police academy with the scheduled early August graduation date. We have three of our newer lateral officers have all successfully completed their field training requirements and are self-sufficient out on the street right now. And we have one remaining vacancy. We're, we're doing an entry level testing process. And we have a written test scheduled for Saturday, May the eighth for that. With the recent retirement of a sergeant, you're currently running a sergeant's promotional process. And we have a number of excellent candidates who are competing for that promotion position. And that's all I have from our report tonight.
Mr. President. Mr. Cavaci. So, so chief, you're saying that with the retirement of the one sergeant, we, we've got a number of folks from within the department that are applying for that position. Is that, is that what I heard?
Yes, we're running a promotional process within the police department.
And the response has been good?
Yes.
That's excellent news. That, that speaks volumes. Great work.
Okay. And last but certainly not least, Ms. McCullough, our HR Director?
Is Ms. McCullough still with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great.
Good evening. There's nothing to report for the Human Resources Department this evening.
Thank you. President Pet Guerrero, that concludes staff reports. We'd be certainly happy to answer any questions that the mayor and common council have.
Right. Thank you very much, Ms. Matthews. And before we move away from the departmental reports, I just want to say thank you to everybody who helped make this first in-person meeting the mayor and council in, in over a year possible, particularly Mr. Davidson and his team who were on-site over the last few days getting everything set up, as well as our friends at the Community Media Center who also paid us a visit and helped make some arrangements. We very much appreciate their continuing support as well as their broadcasting these meetings. And finally, last but not least, Ms. Viskowski, our city clerk, who also was instrumental in making this possible and has, you know, braved the pandemic to come out and be with us tonight. So thank you very much. And it's been a pleasure to be with you all here this evening, I must say.
It's been wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. The last item on the agenda is citizen comments. And, you know, this is when we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. During these virtual meetings, we will invite comments to be sent to our city clerk at comments@westgov.com. Commenters should include their address and phone number with their comments. And at this time in the meeting, we, I will read out the comments that we have received. And that concludes the regular meeting, the agenda rather, and the regular portion of our meeting. And without, without objection, we are adjourned. And I hope everyone continues to stay safe and healthy. Thanks very much.